...projects like the Million Trees Initiative and as we're tearing up some of the concrete and asphalt to allow water to percolate naturally into our aquifers.
I want to get back into more of that subject in just a moment, but talking about some of the water that is just rolling through Los Angeles on its way ultimately to the ocean, this term TMDLs keeps coming up. What are they? Where do they come from? Why do they require our attention? In fact, I think it's a matter of federal law now.
That's right. TMDL is just a fancy acronym for Total Maximum Daily Load, which means the pollutants that we have in our bodies of water. There are over 60 of these pollutants that we are required to take out of different bodies of water in the Los Angeles area, from trash in the LA River to bacteria in Santa Monica Bay, from nitrogen in Echo Park Lake. All of these pollutants, whether they be heavy metals, or the trash that we throw on the street, or oil that gets washed right into our river, we have to do a better job of making sure that we change our personal behavior first. But then, secondly, the city is spending considerable amount of money through the successful passage of Proposition O, which I put on the ballot with Councilwoman Jan Perry a few years ago, and 76% of our voters passed, which allows us to bring in real big sources of money to be able to clean up the river, to clean up our lakes and the ocean. And the impressive thing is, we are the only large city in America that is right now in compliance with those federal Clean Water Act requirements on each of those bodies of water to bring it back to a swimmable, drinkable, fishable standard, depending on which body of water. And that's something that all Angelinos should be proud of.
But don't those standards get even stricter and more difficult to meet as the years go forward? Aren't there, isn't there a timetable involved here as well?
Absolutely. While we've met the timetable so far, Proposition O, which was half a billion dollars, we've already pledged to projects that'll just take us through the first four or five years. We need to find new sources of money to be able to clean that water further. We're hoping that the state may change the state constitution to allow a 50% vote of the people, that would then allow us to take the stormwater fee and directly pay for these improvements. For many years, we fought lawsuits from environmental advocates who wanted to see clean water, and we complained that it was too expensive. But I think Proposition O showed how badly Angelinos want clean water, are willing to pay a fair amount for that. And I think the day that we can see, as we're seeing in the Los Angeles River, fish returning, or people being able to swim in the lake or the ocean, that is a day that we will all celebrate our victory of clean water.
I want to give you another moment to talk about that, because there's 51 miles of the Los Angeles River at play here. How will the river change and in turn presumably improve our environment and the quality of life here in Los Angeles?
Well, I live right by the Los Angeles River, and I grew up walking alongside its banks. Many people don't think we even have a river because it looks essentially like the big flood channel that it has been re-engineered to be. But recently, you know, I think things are really turning a corner. I serve on our ad hoc river committee with Ed Reyes. I'm the vice chair, and he's our chair. And I think our concentration on the LA River is finally yielding results. Just two weeks ago, I was down in Alesian Valley, which is in my district, and I looked up, I was there with a ranger from the Santa Monica Mountains Authority, and we saw a beautiful osprey, a fish eagle, come and land on a post. And he said, you know what, when an osprey is by the Los Angeles River, that means that there's fish in the river. And when there's fish in the river, that means that the water is getting healthy again. And I think that was a wonderful story and a wonderful metaphor for what we need to do along the entire river. 51 miles of a river that gave us our name after all, were named after the Rio de los Angeles, the River of Los Angeles, is something that we all need to be concentrated on. Did a great job of engineering a way to avoid the floods. Now it's time to re-bring back the life that defines the Los Angeles River, and recent studies show fish are jumping back in the LA River.
Finally, during the meeting, you said over the next several months, council is going to be focusing on other topics in the same way. Could you quickly give us a preview? And what specific topics have been chosen besides the environment?
We're going to tackle one of the five topics each month, topics that Angelinos are most concerned about. We've done the environment. Public safety will be our next. Probably transportation will be the third. Our infrastructure, our aging infrastructure will be fourth. And then finally, we'll look at housing and homelessness. We think those five topics, by setting goals, not just having a conversation, but holding ourselves accountable to those goals, will be a great way for us to have a proactive agenda to improve life for all Angelinos.
Well, we look forward to seeing and hearing all about it. District 13 council member and council president Eric Garcetti, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Jack. Great pleasure.
All the motions, suggestions, and questions, and again, there were over 80. We'll now go to the chief legislative analyst, the CLA, to be researched, formatted, and brought back to council for final approval. LA City View is the government access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at 213-473-3978. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending October 12, 2007. On behalf of Lee Smith and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to a meeting of the city council for October 19, 2007. We are in the John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I'm City Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by my colleagues, council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Wizar, Labange, Parks, Perry, and Zine. We will have a quorum later to conduct city business, but as is custom, on Fridays, we have special presentations for notables, luminaries, heroes from our neighborhoods, and others that are presenting us with issues, or we are presenting them with awards and recognitions. We want to welcome our viewers, first of all, on Channel 35, through the city's cable system, which we are broadcast live and rebroadcast each meeting. We're also available online through our city's homepage at la-city.org, where you can catch live streaming web video of our council meetings. And you also now can access old council meetings through our video on-demand service. Just click on the date that you'd like to see the proceedings, and you can watch any of the past meetings of the council. Finally, if you're not close to a computer or a television, you can always call using Council Phone, which is a service of the city, at 213-621-CITY. And you can listen to audio proceedings of the city council, or any of our committees as well. We invite members of the public to fill out speaker cards in the back to be heard during public comment. All items receive a public hearing in either committee or in the full council. And if they have not received a hearing in committee, if you fill out a card, we'll make sure that we hear your voice today. And if you have any general comments of items that are nevertheless under our jurisdiction, but not on our agenda, we invite you to fill those out as well, and the sergeants-at-arms on both sides will be happy to take those cards. Lastly, if you live closer to Van Nuys, we have video teleconferencing capability, where we can take your testimony via remote from Van Nuys. And we move the city council there the first Friday of the month in our effort to bring city council closer to all Angelinos. So with that, I'd like to recognize the council member from the Grade 8 district for our first presentation. Please welcome council member Bernard Parks.
You're so late getting home from the office. Did you miss your train? Were you caught in the rain?
I'd like to ask the great Nancy Wilson to come up.
No, don't bother to explain. Can I fix you quick?
Colleagues, this is a great honor for me to honor Nancy Wilson. I tell her jokingly that since she's retired, she's been busier than she was when she was performing, but she hasn't stopped performing. But I think when we think about Nancy Wilson, I don't think we could put her in a category. She has been that diverse of an artist. Over the years, she's been viewed as a pop stylist, a jazz, blues, show tunes, and a variety of standards. The critics have called her a jazz singer, a blues singer, a pop singer, a cabaret singer. Still, others refer to her as a storyteller, a professor, emeritus, a body language, a consummate actress, and a complete entertainer. I just call her Fancy Miss Nancy. By the age of four, Nancy Wilson knew she wanted to be a singer. Born in Ohio, Nancy grew up in Columbus, where her father provided early exposure to many vocalists. These included singers such as Billy Eckstein, Louis Jordan, and rhythm and blues of Ruth Brown and Laverne Baker, and the King, Nat King Cole, and the big band vocalist Jimmy Russian, and Count Basie's orchestra Lionel Hampton, and the Little Jimmy Scott Group. As a child, she took an active part in church music, as well as school choirs and dance band. Her professional singing career started at the age of 15, just two years ago.
Yeah.
She has her own, she had her own television show, Skyline Melody, on local stations. Soon after that, she began performing in clubs in the Columbus area. After graduating from high school, still undecided about a music career, she enrolled as a teacher in a training program at Central State College. But in 56, her desire outweighed the uncertainty of a vocal career, so she left college to join the Rusty Bryant Band. The same year, she met Julian Cannonball Adderley, when she accompanied Bryant's band to New York City for a recording session. Adderley, impressed with her talent and determination, took an immediate interest in her career. In 59, she moved to New York City and allotted herself just six months to attain her goal. She wanted Cannonball's manager, John Levy, to represent her, and she wanted Capitol Records as her label. Within four weeks of her arrival in New York, she got her first big break, a call to fill in for Irene Reed at the Blue Morocco. Nancy did so well, the club booked her on as a permanent basis. She was singing four nights a week and working as a receptionist during the day. That's a pretty talented receptionist, huh?
At the New York Institute of Technology.
Her debut single, Guess Who I Saw Today, which we heard a little bit earlier, was so successful that between April of 1960 and July of 62, Capitol Records released five Nancy Wilson albums. Two of those remain in demand, reissued today. The swinging neutral with George Shearing and Nancy Wilson and Cannonball Adderley in 1962, and earned her a permanent star in the jazz constellation. In 1963, Tell Me the Truth became the first truly major hit, leading to her performance at the Coconut Grove in 1964, the turning point of her career, garnering critical acclaim from coast to coast. Time Magazine wrote, "She is all at once, both cool and sweet, both singer and storyteller." Nancy has been seen performing in a variety of shows, The Andy Williams Show, The Carol Burnett Show, The Flip Wilson Show, to mention just a few. And for one season, she had her own popular TV show, The Nancy Wilson Show on NBC, that won an Emmy in 1975. Nancy also took acting roles, appearing on popular TV shows throughout the years, such shows as I Spy, Room 222, Hawaii 5-0, and Police Story, The Cosby Show, Soul Food, The New York Undercover, Monisha, and The Parkers.
Okay.
After years in Capitol Records, doing many of which she was second in sales only to the Beatles, surpassing even Frank Sinatra, Peggy Lee and the Beach Boys, and early idol, Nat King Cole, the business has changed, providing Nancy with an opportunity to seek out projects that allow her to express the maturity that she's acquired through her then 55 years of life. One of the more interesting albums from her later period came about in 91, when singer Barry Manilow was given a sheet full of lyrics written by the late Johnny Mercer, which the great songwriter had never put to music. Manilow added the melodies and chose Nancy to sing the songs. In 1995, with the National Public Radio, was looking for an articulate voice for both name, value, and jazz credibility to host their jazz profile series, Nancy was the obvious choice. Not only did she know the music, but she knew the artist personally. Her favorite profile for this program was a 75th birthday tribute to Charlie Parker. In the late 90s, Nancy teamed up with MCG Jazz, a social enterprise supporting the youth education programs of Manchester Craftsman Guild, and a nonprofit minority-directed arts and learning organization located in Pittsburgh, PA. Nancy Wilson Christmas, released for 2001 holiday season, was her only completed Christmas album. All proceeds for the sale of the Nancy Wilson Christmas went directly to support the MCG Jazz. Three years later, MCG Jazz and the world of music got another gift, RSVP, Rare Songs, Very Personal, which was released in August 2004. Receiving gifts in return was one in the 2005 Grammy Award for the Best Jazz Vocal Album, and the 2005 NAACP Image Award for Best Jazz Artist. This was her second Grammy, the first time in 1994 on How Glad I Am, and the second Image Award for the first time in 86. Her name is legendary. She's a, has a doctorate degree in 2005, the UNCF Trumpet Awards, celebrating African-American achievement. It goes on and on. And I would just like to say thank you to Nancy Wilson for gracing us here today. She's a classy woman that spends a great deal of her off-air time on AIDS projects and a number of other things, solving world problems. She also has a ranch in which she takes underprivileged children to expose them to another form of life and adventure, which she's been doing now for a number of decades. I'd like to introduce to some and present to others the legendary Nancy Wilson.
I do thank you. It is such a pleasure to stand here. I've been a Los Angelino for so long. I remember the first day I got off a I remember the first day I got off a plane in Los Angeles to record in California. I remember Ernie Andrews picking me up at the airport. I remember the next time I got off a plane, I was coming from Australia, and I married and stayed in Los Angeles. I have been here ever since. When I first arrived here, the people were so kind and so gracious. To have the club that matters the most to me throughout my career be the Coconut Grove in Los Angeles, it is still the finest venue in the world. It was the one that did the most for me. It put the name Nancy Wilson on a national map. I can't thank Bernard enough and those members of the city council that I have known throughout the years. This takes me back to my mayor, Tom Bradley. I've been here in City Hall for many, many times. I am the face of Los Angeles. I represent Los Angeles, and hopefully I represent Los Angeles well. I do so much of the work that I do that is not about singing, is about our children. It's about us. It's about the face of AIDS. It's every face. We need to deal with our children, we need to be mothers and fathers. See, I'm a hands-on grandmother. I have four grandsons under 13. You better be hands-on with four grandsons. I am very blessed to have three children whom I adore and who have given me so much joy in my life, two of whom are with me here today. There is nothing in the world that can compare to being honored by your peers, by the people who have grown up with you, knowing who you are, and feeling that they do know you, that I'm not somebody who's just walking up and I don't know about her. They know me because I am one of them. I am one of you.
If I may direct your attention, there's another council member that would like to add her good wishes representing both the Ninth District and Ohio, Jan Perry.
That's right, and I hope that the room is filled with people from Ohio, even more so today. And Miss Wilson, I'm really glad I had the chance to just chat with you a little bit and learn more about some of your accomplishments, including the emus and the ostriches. I didn't know about that part, but now that I know you're so close, I am going to contact you and reach out to you and see if you can't come by the Central Avenue Jazz Festival maybe next year at the end of July. That would be so wonderful.
Thank you, and Councilmember Parks has asked for all of us to join him in the well of the horseshoe here for a picture, which would be honored. And after that, I'll be making a presentation on Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
As a matter of fact, I'll have one minute. For to tell you the truth, I've had quite a day too. Guess who I saw today, my dear? I went in town to shop around for something nice and bought that stuff and have a bite when I was through. I looked around for someplace near, and it occurred to me where I had parked the car. There was a most attractive French cabaret in the bar. It really wasn't very far. The waiter showed me to a dark, secluded corner. And as my eyes became accustomed to the gloom, I saw two people at the bar who were so in love, that even I could spot clear across the room. Guess who I saw today, my dear? I've never been so shocked before.
All right, thank you. Our next presentation will be from Council President Eric Garcetti and the distinguished newscaster, Colleen Williams. Take it away, Eric.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and it is a great honor to be here this morning and to follow that wonderful presentation. I'm here with Colleen Williams, one of our great journalists, and I know we have a lot of journalists that are in the room for another presentation later, but she is joining and giving up her time with so many folks that are behind us as well from our Domestic Violence Task Force to again commemorate this year's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We are here to not only ensure that each year the work that we do around this horseshoe and with the mayor, with our city attorney and city controller, continues to combat the scourge of domestic violence throughout our city and our world, but that we do it in a thoughtful way, that each year we redouble our efforts and that we look at a new segment of this issue to ensure that we can come back year after year with successes, with progress, and one day, hopefully, with an end to domestic violence. We're joined by a number of police officers that were honored outside, excuse me, that Colleen will speak to in a moment, but I just want to say a couple of words about the theme of this year, and I want to thank the council members who each appoint one member and an alternate to the Domestic Violence Task Force. And it's your appointees that do the incredible work of putting together not only this program, but the great work that we do in between, in the year between these ceremonies, the hard work of making sure that women and men throughout the city, that young children are given the chance to have a life free from violence. This year's theme reflects Los Angeles, and we often say in these chambers just how diverse Los Angeles is, a place where hundreds of languages are spoken, a place where different cultures, inclusiveness, regardless of your sexual orientation, your religion, your background, you are welcomed here in Los Angeles. Unfortunately, that also reflects its face in domestic violence and the folks that are victims of domestic violence. We see throughout our city that these barriers or these differences can often be a barrier to allowing folks to get help from the lives that they live enmeshed in domestic violence. For instance, when we see language barriers, you may want to get out of an abusive relationship, but if you only speak Khmer or if you only speak a language that oftentimes we are less able to assist with, you can be trapped simply because of that difference. You might be in a same-sex relationship where you're being abused, and the stigma or the belief that domestic violence only happens between a man against a woman keeps you also from getting the help that you need. We, this year, with a theme of reaching out to multicultural communities and across our cultural differences, we know that we have to reach out in unique and different ways than we have in the past. Immigration status is often used as a weapon to keep people in abusive relationship because of the threat of deportation or the threat of jail time is often used over the heads of domestic violence victims. Regardless of what language you speak, regardless of who your partner is, regardless of your cultural background, every victim of domestic violence needs to have access to services. And we have to shine that light in every dark corner of the city until all people know that there is an avenue and a way out. We want to help, we are here to help, and with that, I'd like to turn it over to Colleen Williams, who herself has helped so greatly in raising awareness through her activism. Please welcome from KNBC our beloved Colleen Williams.
Thank you very much. For the sake of brevity this morning, because there are so many honorees back here, we just want to say there are 34 officers with the LAPD who have gone above and beyond in their course of duty to tackle or handle the issue of domestic violence. They are from Central Division, Newton, Rampart, 77th, Southwest, Devonshire, Foothill, Van Nuys, West Valley, Hollywood Pacific, West LA, and the Wilshire Division. The 34 officers you see behind me. Also, we'd like to recognize the LA City View, Channel 35 specifically there, Tony Igani, LA City View Executive Producer, Ted Lynn, the Municipal Access Policy Board members, Robert Manciero, who is the director and producer there, and Debbie Beederman, who is the project coordinator. Now, I can talk about people at television stations, specifically Channel 35, for a long time. I've worked with them before. They're terrific people. Let's see an example of some of the work they've done.
He didn't really mean it. He said he was sorry.
How many times are you going to accept his apologies? He's hit you before.
He's a creep. Just the way he looks at you sometimes scares me.
He promised he'd never do it again. I've got nowhere to go.
I'm afraid for you. You need to get help before it's too late.
National Domestic Violence Hotline. Are you in a safe place to talk right now?
This groundbreaking PSA is meant to reach out to domestic violence victims who have never called a hotline. It will give victims a mean to connect within their community and find a resource to help them get out of a situation. I'd like to call up Carol Tandau right now, who's the chair of the Domestic Violence Task Force. Carol?
And on behalf of the Domestic Violence Task Force, I would also like to thank Channel 35 for helping us with this PSA, and I'm very pleased with the results. I would like to now introduce Gary Ferrato, who is a training officer with LAPD from the 77th Division DART Program, and he is going to speak on behalf of the officers and employees of LAPD who are being honored here today. Gary?
Hi, well, councilpeople, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank everybody for honoring all the officers and detectives who spend a lot of their time helping victims of domestic violence. I'm sure they all have success stories and horror stories regarding the victims they work with every day. I hope the council continues to support the DART teams across the city, the volunteers we have that aren't here today, that work thousands of countless hours, working with the officers in order to help the victims of domestic violence. Today, this is just a small sample of all the officers across the city that work to help to break the cycle of violence.
I just want to, there's a quick reminder, something I learned about today, and maybe you can step up here, Council President, talk about this as well. The white boxes that you see around City Hall, Domestic Violence Hotline, Hope Line it's called, they've partnered with Verizon this year. Come up here. If you have an old cellphone or accessories or anything, batteries, chargers, whatever, bring them in. Everybody has more than one. We all know we're on our second or third or even fourth cellphones in our lifetimes, so bring those in, they'll be put to good use.
Absolutely. Thank you, Colleen, for mentioning that. Verizon Wireless has been a great partner. They have accepted 4 million old cellphones nationwide, and we did this outside, but everybody in the audience who has an old cellphone around their house, raise your hand that you're not using right now. Well, throughout the city of Los Angeles and at council offices, I think most of us have them in our council offices, in our field offices, and certainly here in City Hall, bring those cellphones or cellphone accessories. 4 million have been donated, over $4 million as a result of that have been given in cash grants to domestic violence groups, and over 40,000 of them have been refurbished and given to victims of domestic violence. That is literally sometimes their lifeline. When they're in a situation of domestic violence, Verizon has given them free airtime, which is valued at $10 million, and those cellphones to make sure that they have a way out in an emergency and to make sure that they can feel safe as they move on in their lives. So let's thank Verizon Wireless and let's take advantage of those hope lines. Please give Verizon Wireless a round of applause as well.
We have councilmembers wish to speak?
Sure, absolutely. This would be great.
Councilmember Reyes, followed by Labonge and Perry.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to rise and thank our council president and all of you for all the hard work you're doing. We just had a hearing about MacArthur Park, and what tends to be heard are, in the media, is all the ugliness that happens in the city and when the police officer does a mistake or steps out of bounds. This should be front-page news. We should be talking about all the good things you're doing and the heroism that's in our police department. More importantly, how you are able to reach those who have the least opportunities to voice their own concerns and how to protect and you're offering. So on their behalf, I want to thank you, on behalf of my district and the whole city, all the women and children who are living a better life because of your heroism. This should be front-page news. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Labonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, thank you, and Ms. Williams, for all your community working at KNBC4. Thank you. But to the officers, the greatest thing about Los Angeles is the people who work for it and the people who work hard and the unsung heroes. And how many doors did you knock? How many houses, how many apartments did you go into and liberate someone from violence? And that's such the important thing. And the officers from 911 and the call center, which is the first entry into that. I just wanted to stand and thank you for all your commitment to the service of the people of Los Angeles. Long, long ago, I was at a red light and there was a black and white next to me, and I looked, and I was younger, they were younger, and it was the middle of the night. I was coming home, and I said, "You're the only people out there. The council's not out there, the mayor's not out there, no administrator's out there. The police officers of Los Angeles are officers, they're out there." So I just wanted to thank the men and women for the extra help you give, to give people a sense of security which they didn't have in their life and their hours when they called a need. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Jan Perry.
Thank you, thanks, Mr. Chair, and I think it's no mistake, we've got so many officers out there from Central and 77th because they have that extra special level of devotion and commitment, serving people who are homeless as a byproduct of domestic violence and other issues. And so I want to say just a personal thank you to all of you who are being honored here today. And I know that it's a tough, tough, complex situation that you face out there every day, and I'm just glad that we're expressing our appreciation for what you do and also for reminding everybody that connections and relationships and rapport and reaching out to other women to teach them how to just ask for help is something that is completely within our control and doesn't require extra funding or extra buildings or extra anything. We can start doing that right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Alakon.
First of all, let me extend my thanks to Colleen Williams. I only hope that KNBC puts this in the proper perspective on the media. So many negative stories come out, this is a very positive story. In my council district recently, there was a major front-page story in the Daily News about the Safer Cities Initiative and the fact that there was a spike in crime and how serious it was. Notwithstanding the fact that there was an 80% drop in homicides, they were promoting this as if LAPD was not doing its job. The fact of the matter was that the spike was caused by an increase in domestic violence complaints. The LAPD was doing its job by educating women, empowering women to complain about domestic violence instead of hide from it because of emotional and physical and even financial dependency. So I want to thank you for promoting these officers, for doing the right thing. There will be spikes as long as we have hidden and silent crimes such as domestic violence. Until we can shed a full light on this horrible disease in our communities, we will have those spikes in crime. But in this case, that would be a good thing because we're out there doing the right thing. So I want to commend LAPD for recognizing this. It wasn't always that LAPD recognized domestic violence as a priority crime. It's good to see that these officers make it their priority, and I think that's good for Los Angeles. Thank you.
And I too'd like to offer my congratulations to the officers for the hard work and also the partnership with the DART teams for the civilians that work on the DART teams. I know our funding is continued with that. It's a very vital program, the partnership established between the DART teams and the officers that work that. So congratulations, Sam Colleen. Thank you for your participation, stepping forward and leading that charge on this particular matter because it's an issue that many years ago was a family dispute that we know is domestic violence, a crime that's a very serious crime. So to all of you, congratulations and continue that partnership. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. And just in closing, colleagues...
We've got one more. Councilmember Jose Weiser, a latecomer, there you go.
I'll keep it quick. Thank you again to everyone. I won't repeat what was just mentioned, but all LAPD officers, you guys are out there in the front lines, and something that I learned when I was on the board for the Asian Pacific Women's Center, building shelters for women and victims, is that there has been... been a change in attitude about how we approach these issues, understanding that sometimes our victims do not want to speak, and we are now not only enforcing, but we're supporting and preventing. That's something that's so important for LAPD. And Ms. Williams, thank you for being an advocate. We need more people like you to stand up and shed more light on this and the importance of making sure that all victims of domestic violence have the support systems they need. Thank you so much, and thank you, President Garcetti.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Weezer. And just in closing, we are a body of action here in City Hall. We have the opportunity to expand those DART teams this year as we have continued to do the last two years, and we have the opportunity to take this year's theme because we understand, I think, daily the diversity of this city and ensure that there is nobody who is isolated on account of their, the language that they speak, the culture they come from, the nation in which they were born, the sexual orientation that they have. So let us band together this year to see what we can do. Thank you, Mr. Labange, who pointed out that along with these great police officers, we also have one of our PSRs that's here being honored for the first time, people who take those calls and have to remain calm. And I want to thank Jean and congratulate her as well. And we know that about 100% of the people who are on death row right now for murder came from domestic violence backgrounds. So the work that we do in stopping that cycle of violence, not only will save the victims and the survivors, but will help end violence in many manifestations in our community. So with that, we invite everybody out to the forecourt later, and your staffs, bring those phones in and folks who are watching us. And if you have to ever change a channel on Channel 35, Channel 4 is not a bad place to go. With that, we will, we will close. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. Clerk, Madam Clerk, do we have another presentation? Madam Clerk, another presentation?
The next presentation on the list is Council District 4.
Mr. Labange? Tom Labange, center stage.
Good morning to the members of Los Angeles City Council and the, those in the John Ferraro chambers this morning and those watching on Channel 35 and listening. I have a very special person here who, kind of, I grew up, she was in the fourth estate, I was in another estate in government, but she was a great and is a great person in journalism, Janet Clayton. Give her a big hand right here. For 30 years, Janet Clayton rose through the ranks, starting as an intern in the Washington Bureau of the Los Angeles Times as a Phi Beta Kappa graduate at the University of Southern California, rising to the ranks. She had several roles throughout the paper, general assignment reporter, and including here at the Los Angeles City Hall and the City Times, the Times, City County Bureau. And I remember when I was young, and I used to still smoke cigarettes in this room, you'd sit over in that corner with Erwin Baker, just to tell you how things have changed so much. The clerk would sit down there and Big John Ferraro would up there late in the afternoon, he'd light his cigar. But that's history, just giving you all that history that went on right there. Janet Clayton is part of that history, having worked for the Times in various roles, as I mentioned, and she joined the editorial pages as an op editor and responsible for the editorials, and she soon elevated to the position of editor of the editorial pages. And she was the first woman of color to do that. She also, as a sharp intellect, her grace and humor and her fair-mindedness approach to the job influenced the overall excellence of the Los Angeles Times that resulted in two Pulitzer Prizes for editorial writing, one in 2002 for the chronic problem of people who live on Skid Row, and a second in 2004 of the dysfunctional state of California government system. Janet Clayton, in 2004, was asked to oversee all the metro staff, is titled the Assistant Managing Editor, to sharpen the paper's coverage of Los Angeles, which you truly did. And I think it's so important for the paper to focus on Los Angeles. I'm prejudiced because I'm an LA guy, but it's so important that sometimes the paper did give it such a broad coverage that you brought it back down to where it should be local and including the Washington and international perspective as it was. But for all of this, Janet truly was a great editor with a lot of friends. There was a lot more people who wanted to be here today. It's a busy day over at the paper on Friday, but you're joined by your publisher, David Hiller, and several of your colleagues who grew up with you and saw you, including your daughter, Jocelyn, who's here today. I'm proud of Janet because she lives in my district. I'm proud of Janet because she worked real hard, and you never know, 30 years ago, I was just a little bit into this job here, and now I'm a council member, and you're completing your career with the Times as it rose to the ranks in the paper. I'm just proud of you and wanted to salute you with this commendation on behalf of the mayor and all the city council to salute Janet Clayton for her great service to the people of Los Angeles as an excellence in journalism, as an editor of the Los Angeles Times, and wish her well and all her future endeavors. Congratulations, Janet Clayton. Thank you.
Now, Councilmember Jan Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Janet. I am very happy for you and grateful for the time that you spent at the Los Angeles Times. You brought a unique and very reasoned and focused perspective to the body of journalists who were there, who are there at the Times, and I have to laugh when I say the people who grew up with you, you know, I don't think we're finished yet. I feel like we're still growing, and you know, you've always made a tremendous impression from the time that we were at the University of Southern California and the School of Journalism. And we think about all the people who have come through that school and the career paths they have taken and you being tops among them, it's pretty extraordinary. But not only have you been a great journalist, and I'm sure you will continue to be so, you've been a tremendous mother. And to have your daughter here today looking as wonderful and as poised as she is is a testament to her upbringing and no doubt you as her female role model. And so I just want to say congratulations and thank you for everything.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcetti.
Just briefly, let me add my good wishes as well, Janet, and thank you to Councilmember Labange for this honor. It is difficult to imagine Los Angeles Times without Janet Clayton there. Certainly, as I grew up, you're synonymous with what the Los Angeles Times is about, and certainly synonymous with some of the biggest stories of our time, the ones that defined the city, that shaped this area. And I just want you to promise that even though you won't be giving us your voice from the LA Times perspective, that you will still be giving us your voice in one way or another because Los Angeles needs that in an era of term limits, in an era of rapid turnover of our population. One of the things that this city needs is stability and perspective. You have brought both of them to bear in a graceful, in an incisive way. You've never compromised who you are or your journalistic integrity as well. So in this day and age, that is something to be very proud of, and I wish you all the best in the future, and don't be a stranger around these chambers as well.
Councilmember Parks.
I'm glad I got back in time. If I'm not mistaken, Janet, you started your intern with the police department, are very close, early, early in, that's right, and so, early, early. But I just wanted to stand and say thank you for your contribution. You've done a good job, even when we didn't agree, you did a good job. And also, you were always willing to explain what your logic was, which is all you can ask. And so there are times when you agree to disagree, but there's times you hit it right on the head, most of the time. And I just want to say thank you for being that representative of the community, to bring a voice that often was not heard, a community, particularly one that I represent today, that often feels as though they're out in the vast lands and get very little recognition. And I think those are the things that you brought, that quality, and also to see that you played a major role in the black journalists and educating people about what journalists do and also attracting people to the business because it is a tough business. My son was in it for a while, and we gave him an easy job, work for the city council now. But it's a tough business, and if you satisfy 50% of the people, 50% are unhappy. But I think the fact that you had a moral compass and stayed on course is what I've always appreciated. I just hope all the great success in your future, whatever you choose to do, and just glad I had a chance to get back in time to say thank you for your contribution to Los Angeles.
Councilmember Weezer.
Janet, congratulations and good wishes, and I also wanted to thank you. When I was on the Board of Education and we go see the editorial board, you were very insightful and you understood the nuances of the school district. Sometimes I'd wonder out there if anybody was paying attention to what the school district was doing and isn't someone going to raise the issues that need to be raised in order to move this district forward and to support our children and their learning opportunities? And I recall those editorial board meetings, how I was happy to see someone like you there who cared about our kids, who cared about our school system and generally about the city of Los Angeles. So thank you, good wishes, and it's great to see you here in the chambers. Thank you.
And Jan, I'd like to also offer my congratulations from the San Fernando Valley, the voice of the San Fernando Valley, for all the good work you've done for all the many, many years. Congratulations, and your future endeavors may be as positive and beneficial as your time with the Los Angeles Times. Congratulations to you. Mr. Labange.
Janet, thank you. I'd like to ask from the Los Angeles Times, the publisher of the Los Angeles Times, David Hiller, to say a few words.
Councilman, thank you, Mr. President. We thank the council for taking the time this morning to recognize one of our colleagues. I'm here on behalf of just a few of our Times colleagues who have joined. There are many more. Janet, we'd like the fact that most of our colleagues are back, hard at work, getting ready to get the paper out. And, but thank you for this recognition for Janet. We've been extremely fortunate at the Times for now 126 years to be part of Los Angeles and to tell the stories of, in good days and bad, what's going on. And I got to say, over that 125, 126 years, you wouldn't find anybody who reflects the best of what newspapering ought to be than our colleague Janet, and we thank you for recognizing her this morning. Thank you.
David, thank you very much. Now I present the great Janet Clayton.
All right, here we go.
Well, it feels a little weird for me to be on this end of it. After all of the stories that I wrote as a reporter about the Friday meetings and the resolutions that never ended, and all the stories that I assigned to be written that way also, I think the best thing I could do right now is to say to Councilman Labange, publisher David Hiller, and all my friends here today, and I must say, this is my niece, Angel. My daughter, Jocelyn, is at Northwestern spending our money. And my son, Aaron, is 14, but you know, since he was 14, anything was better than doing something with mom today. So anyway, I just, given all that I've written about before and chatted with you guys about these endless meetings and resolutions, that what I ought to do is just say thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Labange. Thank you. Thank you, Janet Clayton, Los Angeles Times.
Madam Clerk, our next presentation.
Look right there, look right there. Three, two, one.
Our next presentation is by Councilmember Labange, and it's for Italian-American Day.
Got it, we're going to go on this way to the back because we'll take a quick picture. Mr. Parks would like a picture.
Mr. Labange, you're, Mr. Labange, you want to do the next one now, or do you want to wait? You want to wait?
Eric, you want to go? All right. Present this together, Mr. Weezer, who represents Italian Hall, will come join us, too. I was just delivering the cert to Mr. Labange. But let me ask all the Italians in the house to step forward, and want to thank you, Mr. President, for recognizing what we celebrate here today as Italian-American Month in the United States of America. Give them a round of applause. Joe, come on up here. Joe Sorrell's hiding someplace, but he has to, we are incomplete without you. We have a presentation here today that I'd like to read on behalf of Mr. Labange, Mr. Weezer, and myself. 16 million Italian-Americans represent the fourth-largest ethnic group in the United States. Los Angeles is the fifth metropolitan area in the US with the most Italians after New York, Philadelphia, Boston, and Chicago. So we are clearly the largest population west of the Mississippi, and the Italian influence in Los Angeles is a longstanding and far-reaching influence. More than five centuries ago, Christopher Columbus, an Italian, boldly set out on a long and challenging journey across the Atlantic, and 300 years later, a cohesive Italian community was thriving here in Los Angeles. From their earliest days in El Pueblo, Italians have been a significant partner in the city's growth and success. And as a side note, at El Pueblo, which Mr. Weezer represents, it's wonderful to see Italian Hall as part of the recognition of that and something that we are all committed to continuing to expand and grow with great programming and great festivities. Since 1823, when Giovanni Leandri, is there anybody related to Giovanni here today? Who came here, there's another Giovanni right here. He opened a general store and built his home where the Plaza Firehouse now stands. Italians have had an enormous impact for nearly 200 years here in Los Angeles' history and culture, in politics, religion, science, and medicine, as they've become an integral part of the city's cosmopolitan mix. We see Italian art and architecture dotted throughout our landscape, the Getty Villa, the Gristi Villa, the statue of Christopher Columbus that's just over here at the Civic Center Mall where we go on Columbus Day, the historic Italian Hall that I mentioned, and the large number of Italian-Americans in entertainment, Frank Capra, Joseph Barbera, Barbera, excuse me, Frank Sinatra, Dean Martin, Penny Marshall, and hundreds and hundreds more. The influence of Italians is as pervasive in Los Angeles, whether it's business leaders and entrepreneurs or prominent citizens in the field of education, sports, government, and public service. There's even been Italian names up there in the president's chair. Italian-Americans in Los Angeles have distinguished themselves, and whereas my family, as my Italian brothers and sisters know, came through, from Italy, through Mexico to Los Angeles. It was Maximo, we're not sure if it was Garizetti or Garicetti who came through Chihuahua in the north part. Well, no, no, the way it is right now, it's Garicetti, but it might have been a change from Garizetti with a Z because there's, both names exist. So we're not sure if we're from Naples or if we're from Tuscany, but one of the two. And we came here, and certainly my story is part of that rich tapestry and tradition. And we have so many people here who influence and enrich the life of Los Angeles and this great country. And with that, before we present this presentation, I mean, this resolution for Italian-American Month, I'd like my colleague Jose Weezer to say a couple words, and then I think Joe Sorrell needs to say his piece, too. So please welcome Jose Weezer.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much, and I simply want to say Happy Italian-American Month. But I wanted also to point out that I asked for, and thanks to the council, we received $500,000 to upgrade the Italian Hall at El Pueblo. That has been needed in some repairs for some long time. So thank you very much, councilmembers, for supporting that. I also wanted to thank the active Italian-American community that we have because if it wasn't for them, various people who called, various people who came and visited me and brought it to our attention, that here, at the site of the birthplace of the city of Los Angeles, we have this great structure recognizing the contributions of Italians to this great city, we need to make sure we recognize that by having that facility open and available to all to see. So thank you very much, and again, Happy Italian-American Month. Adelante.
And next, I'd like to recognize Marcela Leonetti Taylor. Sorry, sorry. Taylor there and Tyler there. I'll talk to Mr. Labange's staff right away. Tyler, who's the Executive Director of Public Relations at California State University, Northridge. She's an active member of the Italian-American community here in Los Angeles, and she serves as the Southern California Area Coordinator for the National Italian-American Foundation, which Joe Sorrell has been president in past years and is a member of the Federated Italo-American of Southern California and was co-chair of Los Angeles County's year-long celebration of the Christopher Columbus 500-year anniversary. She holds the Cavallieri al Merito della Repubblica Italiana, decoration from the Republic of Italy. Please welcome her to say a few words now.
When Italian-Americans, actually Italians, came to the El Pueblo in the 1820s, they quickly assimilated themselves into the fabric of the new city. Now, 180 years ago, or 180 years later, they are very much a fabric of the community here in Los Angeles, from medicine, art, literature, government, and, most important, food. We are big contributors to Los Angeles. We want to thank the city council for this wonderful honor and also for the part they have played in the historic Italian Hall. We are proud Italian-Americans. We live it, we love it, and we celebrate it. Molto grazie.
I'm going to play this program a little by ear, but I'm going to ask Joe Sorrell to come forward, well-known and beloved, very close friend of the man whose chambers are named after, John Ferraro, and a man who has contributed greatly to Los Angeles. Please welcome Joe Sorrell.
John Ferraro was one of those who helped me discover the fact that I was an Italian. I want to thank what I would call the Italian wannabes around the circle here today, led by the president. Speaking of the president, I was introducing his father to the prime minister, the current president. Prime Minister, Vlada Milosevic. I'm trying to get to come to town sometime soon. And I said, "Mr. Prime Minister, this is the Chief Law Enforcement Officer of Los Angeles County, Gil Garcetti." He said, "No, no, 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 Garcietti, Garcietti." So when I call, when I call him Garcietti, that's the reason. Thank you very much. I've only, I've only come before this council twice in all the years I've been coming down here. The first one was to save Columbus Day and here today. But again, thank you very much. Thank you, Tom Labonge, protege of our council president, John Ferraro. Thank you for all the Italian wannabes who are here today. We make, as of now, you're all honorary Italians. Thanks, Janet. And thank you for the help with the historic Italian Hall.
All right, next, we're gonna hear, Tom Labonge's gonna say something to take at home and to mention our great sister city in Italy as well. But in the meantime, I'd like to invite Nick Egidio to come forward, who's the president of the Federated Italian-Americans of Southern California. Please welcome Nick.
Wish to thank very much Councilman Labonge for the resolution that we have here today. On behalf of Federated Italian-Americans of Southern California and the many organizations we represent, we wish to thank City, Los Angeles City Council for this wonderful, wonderful award today. Thank you so much. God bless.
Take it home. Thank you very much, Mr. President, Mr. Garcetti, our council president, everybody. We have a great councilwoman in Janice Hahn of the 15th District, and she fought so hard. She would want to be here today, but she's a little under the weather with the change of the heat, and I think it just, a lot of people got that. I don't wanna, I'm not a doctor, so I should say, but Ischia, our very, very, Ischia, our sister city right here, and I just want to salute it. It's such a lovely place and all the history that goes to San Pedro from there. And Carmelo, I want you to say a few words, if you would, please. Let's give our sister city and our chair a big hand for that.
Good morning. Thank you, Tom, and a big thank you to you, Janice Hahn, even though you are in here, and Mike Molina, and our mayor in Ischia. The Ischitani, another group of, a big group of Italian came in San Pedro in 1970. That's the story that we have now. 1870, that's the first group of people that we have. And we are trying to put together all the names, all the people who came after that. We are about 30,000 people now of Ischian descent. And also, in San Pedro, there is another big, large group of Sicilian, I believe another 15,000 or 20,000 people, maybe less, maybe more. But the Italian community is very present, it's very active. We love food, good fashion, we love to live life, just like everybody else. I thank you. It's a pleasure to be here, it's an honor to be here, and thank you for declaring today Italian Day. Thank you.
Italian American Day. And I know, when I was in the back room, you spoke of John Ferraro, the late, great council president, for 35 years a council member, and I is honored to work for John, who is such a beautiful man, who loved pasta. Kim Ritchie from KTLA Channel 5, give us a big hand, huh?
Hi.
Oh, it's great to be here. Tell us about how important it is to be an Italian-American.
Oh, it's very important, yeah, equally important to be an American. And Angelino is born here in Los Angeles, but all four of my grandparents made the big trek from Italy. And what an honor that you're naming the entire month Italian American Month. We are so pleased, and grazie.
All right.
Where is the food? Where is the food? I thought we'd have pizza, pasta, no food?
And congratulations on your recent wedding.
All right. We have a couple councilmembers who wish to address Mr. Alacan. Mr. Alacan?
I always like to stand up and talk about the great history of Italians in the San Fernando Valley. And, you know, I like to tell the story about Mother Cabrini, because a lot of people don't realize that Mother Cabrini, who was sainted about a decade ago, really did a lot of her work in the San Fernando Valley, and was organizing around the immigrants, the immigrant Italians. And she was a champion for immigrants' rights. And so it really inspired me to represent the district that I represent, and the new generation of immigrants, to represent their rights to become fully-recognized American citizens, not just in terms of citizenship, but in terms of the way of life. And so Italians have certainly met that standard, and have, it's been my pleasure. Growing up, whether it was Mrs. Ferry, or Mrs. Lazaretto, or Mrs. Clercuzio, all of whom disciplined me for appropriate reasons, or Father Moretti, or the numerous priests. My father's barrio is named Orcasitas, but Orcasitas was an Italian who owned half the San Fernando Valley. And even the story about Al Capone and the convent over in Silmar, that used to be his home on the West Coast. It's a vibrant history, but it is deserving of Italian-American to have your month in Los Angeles. And as I told Mayor Vera Iglesias, that when I was a kid, during the Jewish holidays, everybody would be Jewish, and during St. Patrick's Day, everybody would become Irish. Well, during Latino Heritage Month, I told the mayor, everybody needs to be Latino. And Bernardi used to say, "I am a Latino." And so during this month, everybody is Italian.
Half of the mayor, and I love that speech, Richard, that you just gave right there. I remember my baseball coach, Mr. Delagrotto, who is still living, he's about 88 years old, on Griffith Park Boulevard. All the Italians who have done so much, John Ferraro, I always mention his day, but to all of you, we salute you with Italian American Month, on behalf of Mayor Vera Iglesias and the entire City Council Controller. Mr. Alacan? All right, we're ready for our next presentation by Mr. Alacan.
Members, I don't have, I don't have any theme music, but we'll try to do the presentation anyway. You know, I came to City Council for my second journey on the City Council, and one of the things that stood out to me was Herb Wesson's presentations once a month to adopt dogs. And I thought that was a really good idea. And so I said, I told my staff, "Let's come up with something that really reflects what my passion is." And so I've decided that I'm gonna make monthly presentations on the issue of child safety, and recognize people for doing great things with regard to child safety. As you know, it's something I'm very passionate about, have done a lot of work on, and will continue to do so. But there are so many good organizations out there doing some great things, and I wanna, I wanna, once a month, recognize them, not to take away from all the programs that we recognize, independent of my recognition, for exactly what I'll be recognizing people for in terms of child safety. Today, I want to recognize Children's Hospital of Los Angeles and Kohl's Department Stores, who have worked together to create an award-winning program called Partners in Injury Prevention. This is a program that provides informational pamphlets and educates people on a variety of subjects. In fact, my staff put together this high-tech chart. But this actually, it shows all the pamphlets that they have put together, and it has everything from earthquake safety to toy safety, bicycle safety, passenger safety, sports safety, poison safety, water safety, fire safety, home safety, and school safety. And I can tell you that, I'm sure, that because of these pamphlets, that lives have been saved in Los Angeles. So it is my great pleasure to honor these two organizations for this incredible effort. Today, obviously, we know that in Los Angeles, we are one of the youngest cities in the nation, the average age tips below 30, and we have over a million kids in our city. And so it is absolutely necessary that we recognize that we have a responsibility to make our city as safe as possible, especially for these kids. In terms of injuries, the facts are astounding. Almost 3.5 million children 14 and under suffer from sports-related injuries, requiring medical attention. 2.2 million children are injured at school. More than 52% of the 2 million poisonings a year happen to children under six years old. More children today are killed as passengers in vehicle accidents than from any other type of injury, and approximately 2.5 million children are harmed by household hazards and accidents. More than 40% of all bicycle-related deaths from head injuries occur amongst kids aged 14 and under. So it is very appropriate that we recognize Kohl's has committed $1.5 million to Children's Hospital of Los Angeles for their injury prevention program. That is an outstanding commitment, and as I said, it will save lives, and does save lives. So I would like to recognize these two organizations for their tremendous commitment to child safety. And first of all, I'd like to recognize Children's Hospital. And on behalf of Children's Hospital, we have Susan Wu, who is a pediatrician at Children's Hospital LA, and Assistant Professor of Clinical Pediatrics at USC. In addition to caring for Children's Hospital at CHLA, and teaching pediatric residents, she is a co-director of the Pediatric Resident Child Advocacy Program. And we would like to ask her to step forward to receive this recognition.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Alacan and City Council. I'm really touched and happy to have someone such as you, as such a passionate advocate for something that we also consider very close to our hearts. And as you've mentioned, unintentional injuries are the number-one cause of death in kids under 15. You know, we always think a lot in healthcare settings about asthma and chronic diseases and things like that, but unintentional injury is number one. And more than 90% of these injuries are preventable, a lot of them preventable by fairly, fairly simple interventions, such as education, and small environmental modifications, such as moving furniture to certain places, and very inexpensive safety devices. And thanks to our partnership with Kohl's, we've been able to provide a lot of these programs to our patients, also the community around us. I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of those programs. At the Children's Hospital, we see hundreds of kids with unintentional injuries, which are preventable, and we always think to ourselves, "What can we do about this?" And a lot of it is education, and these brochures are part of our education program. We're also starting, just this month, a home visit program, where we'll be able to go into the homes of our patients and do some safety assessments, as well as to assist the families in obtaining the safety devices necessary to prevent injury. And we're partnering with our pediatric residency program to do this, so that we'll be able to train future pediatricians and future physician leaders to make injury prevention part of their routine counseling and part of their careers in the future. We also are, have developed lots of educational videos that are bilingual, which we'll be showing in the emergency department and in our waiting rooms. And we also have been giving out hundreds of bicycle helmets, and teaching families and children how to appropriately wear these bicycle helmets, because with helmets and with devices such as car seats, and even with, if an accident occurs, the children will be protected. And almost all children, infants, in rear-facing car seats, if installed properly, will not be injured in an accident. So I'm just really happy that we have Kohl's as one of our partners and advocates, and also want to thank you for being an advocate for us. I'm happy to hear that you are starting this program to bring attention to a very much needed program in a serious public health problem. So thanks a lot.
But I don't get 1.5 million from Kohl's. We'll talk. Anyway, also representing Kaiser is Olga Taylor, Child Passenger Safety Technician and Healthy Family Certified Application Assistor. She has over 19 years in the healthcare field, and we'd like for her to talk about the community programs.
Thank you. Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank you for honoring us today. And community outreach is the highest priority for the Kohl's Safety and Injury Prevention Program at Children's Hospital of Los Angeles. Through the use of community demographic data, community outreach is targeted towards specific groups. Numerous events are held during the year, and last year, we participated at over 60 community events. The program serves many diverse communities throughout the greater Los Angeles, and because of the linguistic and cultural diversity, we work through established community organizations serving the Latino, Armenian, Filipino, Chinese, Korean, and Thai communities. This allows Children's Hospital of Los Angeles to provide community organizations who can provide information in appropriate languages. Many community organizations appreciate the opportunity to partner with Children's Hospital of Los Angeles as a respected pediatric institution in order to provide services to their communities. The program builds awareness of preventable injuries, including but not limited to child passenger safety, home safety, toy safety, and what we mentioned, we did already mention what we focus on. It has reached families of all economic levels, and increasingly, grandparents and extended family members have been contacting us to receive our education. The program provides families with equipment, instruction, and resources in which to keep children safe. It empowers parents to take an active role in preventing avoidable injuries. The child passenger safety component of the program is extremely comprehensive. All materials, equipment, instructions, and information are carefully chosen. Strategies used include appropriate literacy-level educational materials, car seat checks and installation, return demonstration by the parents and caretakers, giveaways at health centers, schools, and community centers. Approximately 700 children and their families were serving the child passenger safety component of the Kohl's program. This included selection of age and weight-appropriate restraints, training on how to use and install the child restraint, and viewing of safety videos, reviewing the California laws, and return demonstrations. Through participation in numerous health and safety events throughout Los Angeles, as well as through written communication, approximately 50,000 community outreach contacts were made during 2006, and safety items such as car seats, bicycle helmets, and home safety equipments were distributed. Currently, we are working with the Mexican consulate during their Binarational Health Week. We're working with the Boys and Girls Club of Hollywood, Virgil Middle School, and Francisco Bravo Medical Magnet High School. And last, but not least, our Fall Back on Safety event, which is gonna be held tomorrow. Thanks to the generous funding from Kohl's, we are able to reach families throughout a complex geographic area, and work with community agencies they trust in order to spread the injury prevention message. I also want to thank Councilman Alacan for acknowledging our efforts in educating and bringing awareness of such vital issues to the community. Thank you.
Of course, we know Children's Hospital is dedicated to child safety each and every day that they operate. It is their mission. But when a private entity comes in and participates, especially at the level of Kohl's Department Stores, we really have to recognize that effort. So I want to thank Kohl's Department Stores. And representing Kohl's Department Store, we have the Vice President and District Manager, John Palmatier. He has over 19 years of experience in the retail industry. John has spent his entire 19-plus years in the Southern California retail area, and many of those years directly in Los Angeles. John is the proud father of two girls aged 23 and 12, and a boy aged 17. He knows a little bit about child injuries, and he has volunteered and coached with the Cal South Soccer League, as well as volunteering through work at many nonprofit organizations, of course, Children's Hospital, but also the Dream Center of LA at Skid Row. So he would, we would like to present to Kohl's this resolution, and thank them for their tremendous contributions to this effort.
Good morning, councilmembers, and special thank you to Councilman Alacan for the invite to such an incredible presentation today. to such an incredible presentation today. What a pleasure, what a privilege, and what an honor to be in this group in the city that truly is the City of Angels. Kohl's looks for ways to give back in every community that we serve nationwide. And in 2000, we created a program named Kohl's Cares for Kids. This program supports children's health and education initiatives nationwide. The program's funding is based on a children's book program and children's plush program that sells for $5, but 100% of the proceeds fund this program. Through 2006, the program has raised $85 million. Kohl's began supporting the Children's Hospital of Los Angeles with the Kohl's Safety and Injury Prevention Program in 2004 with a five-year grant of 1.5 million dollars. The purpose of the program is to raise awareness and provide education and equipment to families and communities on unintentional injuries. Since 2004, the Children's Hospital of Los Angeles has distributed nearly 300 bicycle helmets, 600 child safety seats, and 2,000 home safety kits. The Children's Hospital of Los Angeles works very closely with law enforcement officers, firefighters, medical professionals, educators, parents, grandparents, policymakers, but most importantly, with children. Together, we can make a difference, because truly the best remedy for injury is prevention. Thank you very much.
Ms. Alarcon, we have two councilmembers, Councilmember Grul, Councilmember Reyes.
I knew she would say something.
There you go. Wendy Grul.
And I just want to compliment you, Richard, because you started a lot of these programs or ideas within your own district when you were a senator, and I think probably when you were a council member. And it's something that we all become aware of, but our own experiences kind of pushes in a direction. And as you all know, I have a four-year-old. And so when I first had my car seat, we were giving -- we've raised money to give car seats away and have installations, which we hope the public understands as well, that you can call your CHP or LAPD and set up a time where they can ensure that you're installing properly. Because as mentioned, you know, I think it's something like eighty percent of the car seats are not installed properly. And I have to say, whoever installed mine in my car, I won't out them at the moment, but didn't do it right. And so that first day I came in, and my husband had his car, and I had mine, and they checked, and his was put in properly, mine was not. And so it is really important for people to understand that not only just having the car seat, but making sure that it is installed properly. We all remember that tragic incident, I think it was off the Pomona Freeway, where a car went over the edge, and the mother died, but the child, who was in the car seat properly, lived in that tragic accident. And so it can save lives, as well as those helmets and teaching them at an early age. So I just want to thank all the individuals behind you, Richard, who have supported your efforts, and to you, to thank you for your leadership on this issue, because if we can save lives by some very simple precautionary measures, it really is, I think, an extraordinary effort on our behalf. So thank you very much, Richard, for your leadership. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to rise and thank my colleague, Councilmember Alarcon, for his hard work. To Kohl's, thank you so much. Children's Hospital, on a personal note, when my younger brother was very little, he had a really bad viral infection, and he was close to dying. And it was the Children's Hospital, the doctors, nurses, that revived him and gave him another chance. It sounds a little melodramatic, but for our family, it was something that was very hard to endure. So for me, Children's Hospital is a very special place, but more importantly, the fact that, as we heard over this past week, what it takes to live in Los Angeles, what people actually make, the ones that tend to suffer are the children, because they are the ones that take the brunt when no one's home, when parents are working, the malnutrition, everything that is being affected, everything that affects our children, you end up addressing through your care. So I want to thank you for that, and thank you, Richard, for allowing us to celebrate the unsung heroes in our city. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labonge.
It's got to rise always for Children's Hospital in all you do. Dr. Kenny Williams, I don't know if you know, Kenny Williams lives around the corner from us, and all the work, we live in Silver Lake, and I always think of you when the helicopters come from around the county, you know, serving the children in great need. And this is such an important program, Richard, thank you, because I know your special connection to this whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon.
Yes, I just want to say that my staff is going to get you copies of these brochures so that you can put them in your district offices and in your council office at City Hall, so that you can inform the public about ways to make their children safer. I know we all care, and so again, we want to thank Children's Hospital and Kohl's Department for stepping forward and giving us a model of excellence in child safety. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Alarcon again for a second presentation.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll while we're waiting?
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weesar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, that allows to conduct business. And Mr. Alarcon.
From prevention of children's injuries into recognizing some champions of sports, it's a pleasure for me to recognize the Centurions from Silmar. One of the best baseball programs in the world is at Civil, the Silmar Independent Baseball League in Silmar, longstanding relationship with that organization. But this year, we want to recognize these special kids in the nine-year-old division, nine-years-and-under, a kids' pitch division. They are the 2007 Triple Crown State Champions for all of California. Of course, they come from the Seventh Council District, and they are the Southern California Centurions from Silmar. They played against teams from all parts of California, and out of six teams, the Centurions went undefeated with a 6-0 record to win the Triple Crown State Championship on September 3, 2007. So I'd like to congratulate the parents for their continued support of these kids. Baseball was very, very good to me as a kid. I probably would not be a councilmember if I didn't have that one thing to inspire me to do better in school. And so I know how important it is, and I want to thank the parents for supporting their kids. These kids are very special, obviously, but they will remember this year. You always remember the year you were champions, and I know that each and every one of them has their very special moments in success at the plate, or on the bases, or at the mound. And so I want to congratulate the 2007 Triple Crown State Champions of the Southern California Centurions. And we have certificates of congratulations to all of them. At this time, I'd like to present this one to David Saavedra, who's the head coach of these incredible champions. And you know, in order to be a champion, you got to have a champion coach. So Coach Saavedra. By the way, he happens to be LAPD, so.
On behalf of all the parents and the players, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Alarcon, Ruben Zaragoza, and the rest of the City Council members for taking the time to honor these kids for this great achievement. By doing so, you've shown the kids that if they set goals, work hard towards those goals, they can achieve great rewards. So on behalf of the SoCal Centurions, which actually are named after LAPD's own Centurions, we thank you.
Would the captain of the team like to say something?
There is no captain.
No captain?
There's no captain.
They all take charge.
Who's the best speaker?
Not me.
Would you like to say thank you?
No, not me.
They say thank you. Champions on the field. But anyway, we want to congratulate the Centurions from Silmar.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. If we can run through the agenda, and then we'll come back for public comment after we pass the minutes. First order of business, please.
Approval of the October 16 minutes.
Thank you. I'll move those, and those are always on the agenda. It's been nicely pointed out to me by another member of the City Clerk's Office, so thank you for redoubling that. Ms. Grul, second without objection, the minutes will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And I will move those with Ms. Grul seconding as well, without objection, those will be approved. And if we can run through the agenda?
First, there is a request to continue item number 36 to October 23, 2007.
Colleagues, any objection to continuing item 36? Seeing none, that will be continued to the 23rd of this month, 23rd of October, number 36. Next items?
Next are items one through nine, and those are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay. Colleagues, we have items one through nine, notice for public hearing. We do have a card on number five, so we will call that one special. Any specials one through nine? Okay. If not, we'll close the public hearing, and I don't see any specials from my colleagues, so that will be time to open the roll on the balance.
Mr. President, for number eight and nine, the recommendation for the record needs to be read out loud. It's a little different from the agenda.
Could you please do that?
Item number eight, the recommendation is to continue the hearing and to present the ordinance on November 2nd. And item number nine, the recommendation is to close the hearing and to adopt the ordinance.
Okay. We'll go ahead without objection, continuing number eight, and we will adopt the recommendation on number nine with the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And those will all carry over, except for the continuation until a second reading due to less than 12 members. Next items, please.
Next are items number 10 through 13, and those are items for which public hearing has been held.
Okay. Public hearings on those. Mr. Reyes.
Item 12, please, if we can refer that to committee, the Planning and Land Management Committee.
Okay. There's no objection to referring item 12 to committee, that'll be referred to Plum. And Ms. Perry on item 10?
Yeah, thank you. Just some modifications.
Okay. Would you like to leave those in the record, or is it good and circulated?
I just want to make sure the Plum report is submitted as part of the official record regarding height district change for the property listed on the item.
All right. So, Madam Clerk, do you know those changes, or any of those in some other form?
I was under the impression that there is an ordinance for the height change, and I understand from the City Attorney--
Why don't we hold that on the desk for a second, and we'll see if we can clear that up. So we'll call 10 special, just for a moment, and hold that on the desk. That leaves 11 and 13. Nobody wishes to call those special? Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please. Next items?
Next are items number 14 through 35, and those are items for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have cards on 29 and 34. We'll call those special. Any other, and for the rest of them, excuse me, we'll open and close the public hearing. Any members wishing to call item special from the balance? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Some of those will be approved today. The ordinances 14 through 23 will carry over till next week, again, due to less than 12 members. And in that vein, I want to thank Ms. Grul, who was excused from business today, for coming back and being part of this meeting to meet Quorum. Thank you. Thank you, Larry, out there, too. And that will take us, is that the end of the agenda?
Yes, it would.
Okay, we'll go to public comment now, and I'd like to start with, well, it was Larry Green. Our next speaker will be Matt Dowd after that.
Good morning. I just want to spend a few seconds before I go into my statement to thank Christiane Ogier, the founder of Ed Hardy, for inviting me to a great party last night, and I was over at the Cat Club last night, dancing the night away, and I wish my friend Stefan Adika will come back to the Cat Club. He's a great bass player, so I use my 15 seconds to give those two personal mentions. And the Crenshaw High School band was incredible over at The Grove last night. But now it's my little statement. I'd like to see a motion introduced by the L.A. City Council, perhaps by Eric Garcetti or Dennis Zine, indicating support for our troops for victory against Islamic fascism in Iraq. Recognizing the U.S. is at war against Islamic fascism and terrorism, it's in the interest of democracy that we finish the war in Iraq, and that we bring our troops home once we've had victory in Iraq. I was mortified by some of the comments I heard, or by this horseshoe, many of them are friends of mine, about lies by our president, about false pretenses. Folks, I know none of you are listening to me, the people of L.A. are listening to me right now. And Eric, you were in the reserves, and you knew to not make a statement last week and say something stupid. You knew just to vote your conscience, and I applaud Bill Rosendahl, but nobody wants to end the war faster than me. And George Bush has talked about ending the war in Iraq. But for the L.A. City Council to pass the motion they did, it would be nice to see who would vote against a resolution supporting our troops and supporting victory in Iraq. Many of the LAPD and L.A. firefighters are in Iraq right now, and how do you think they'd like to feel seeing, when they're in the sand dunes in Iraq, 140-degree weather, with 100 pounds of armaments on their back, to see the L.A. City Council wants them immediately home? That's a disgrace. I'd like to see a resolution supporting the troops in Iraq, calling for victory. Most of the people in the city of L.A. don't know what's going on in Iraq. The media is a farce in this city. And look, we all know that if George Bush was a Democrat, he wouldn't have passed that resolution. We all know that. We all know that it was a slight against the President of the United States, and yes, I'm a Republican, but Joe Lieberman's a Democrat, and the comments that I say, Tom, are pretty much the comments of Joe Lieberman and Hillary Clinton and John Edwards. And I'll stop there. Anyway, congratulations to Rutgers, congratulations to the Red Sox. I want to end the war in Iraq. I want to bring all the troops home, but I also want to see victory in Iraq. Let's see that resolution. If you need help with the wording, any of you can call me. If you need help with the wording, thank you. Have a good weekend.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd. Is Mr. Dowd here? No. Is Michael Hunt here? Let's see him. Leonard Wayne Rose Jr. will be our next speaker. After that will be Arnold Sachs.
Leonard Wayne Rose here. I hear last time about Victory Outreach was here at City Hall, 10,000 ex-gang members, you know, and their mayor, Allee Mayor, right on this page, right here, praying with Sonny Sinner, you know, at Victory Outreach, and it's on channel two, channel four, channel seven, and I got home at 5:00 and see them on TV. And then it says, "Stop the Violence March Victory Outreach 40 Years in Bringing Hope to Our Inner City." And Sonny Sinner got a certificate, the mayor, that mayor talked about Broy Heights, you know, down there, the passes at Los Angeles County Jail, you know, on the payphone, you know, and they went to see lots of people with the background there. And here, things I'm going to share with you guys. Churches have programs to reach our city throughout California. The City Hall School District need to go to talk to board members and councilors in high school if they have voice in the hood drama in school, in city parks, and said it. And their testimony can reach out young people, bad thing where they came from, from their past. Victory Outreach, www.victoryoutreach.org, and Allee Dream Center, Calvary Chapel, Praise Chapel, New Hope Medicine, and many other churches. And that is different hope in our community and make our city more safer in our city. And I got these flyers. And then Los Angeles County Jail, my church have Los Angeles County Jail medicine, too. You can read that, too. And then--
Thank you very much, Mr. Rose.
--I study coaching here, too.
Thank you. That's your time. Thank you very much for your public comment. Arnold Sachs is next. After Mr. Sachs will be Jonathan Taylor, and after Jonathan Taylor will be Jose Martin Martinez Herrera. will be Jose Martin Martinez Herrera. Good morning, Mr. Sacks.
Good morning, councilmembers, thank you very much. Arnold Sacks, I'd like to discuss two things. One, with the new union contracts coming before the City Council for approval, I'd appreciate it if the City Council or the Chief Financial Officer, whoever, would actually present the facts as they are in reality. Unfortunately for the city, they are negotiating these contracts right after the United Auto Workers contractual situation appeared in the papers, and it was discussed that the actual cost for the General Motors was $75 per hour for the workers. That's not what they're actually getting paid, that's $75 including the benefits. So when the city is going to discuss these contracts that are coming up with their workers, it would be appreciated to the public if they would actually discuss the real cost of the contract, including the benefits, and not just the pay raises that are being offered to the city workers. Now, I'd also like to discuss something else, I wanted to address also the resolution that the City Council passed last week regarding the troop withdrawal in Vietnam, and it's very, very tiring to hear people request support for the troops, does not necessarily mean supporting the war. They are two different animals, and it's tiring to hear people misappropriate these causes for personal agendas. I don't believe that anybody does not support the troops, but supporting the war, my main point to actually address is the environment that exists that enables contracted mercenary groups such as Blackwater, a free ride that avoids accountability for actions taken that would be cause for prosecution for U.S. troops. If you support the war, do you support these free and unaccountable actions by Blackwater that eventually put the troops in the line of fire to catch a bullet for their actions? That's a question needs to be answered. I support the troops, but I certainly don't support those actions, and the city needs to address that too.
Thank you very much. Jonathan Taylor is our next speaker, and then Jose Martinez Herrera.
Good morning, honorable members, my name is Jonathan Taylor, I was born in Santa Monica Hospital, and lived here for about 50 years in the Southland. My mother immigrated, so to speak, from Portland down here during the Great Depression, and the reason I'm mentioning that is she was honored recently at the Griffith Observatory reopening, she was one of the original people that was there in '35 when it was opened, actually Councilman LeBonde was there. But the reason I am here today is I love Los Angeles, and I want to see it continue to prosper, I'd like to give something back to the community. We've all seen the real estate market fluctuations, it's no secret, and I'm concerned about the rising foreclosure rate and general distress of sellers throughout the city and county. In the last year, foreclosures have quadrupled, and I believe a lot of the business revenues and tax bases are lost as well as bringing families into unsupportable conditions as they become financially unstable. In some cases, many of the families received poor advice from mortgage professionals and real estate professionals, and many people will be losing their homes to foreclosures. A lot of this is caused by a lack of education and understanding, and I would like to propose to the Board of Supervisors that they promote a consumer education lecture at no expense to the county or the city, and it'd be a one and a half hour lecture on how people can get out with some equity in their homes or buy a home here in our lovely city. I'd be happy to conduct this public service lecture, free of charge, with the benefit to the community, and result being a better educated and informed citizenry, reduce foreclosure rate, and last but not least, a way for citizens who find themselves at the end of their rope, a way out for them. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Jose Martinez Herrera, not Barry Henning Sr. After that will be Esther Lofton. Excuse me, Ms. Lofton, you'll be second, or why don't you go ahead if you don't mind, Mr. Henning, we'll take you right after. Go ahead, Ms. Lofton, go ahead.
My name is Esther Lofton, and I lived in the 10th District of the City of Los Angeles. I'd like to say first of all that I've read Mr. Thomas's book, My Grandfather's Son, and he erred in a very significant way. The high-tech lynching is not limited to black Republicans, it is a high-tech lynching, all black men in this country, in the absence of direct representation, are subject to a high-tech lynching. And I come here with this, to support this, with the fact that my husband was an honorably discharged, disabled combat infantry veteran, who filed a case in Superior Court of the County of Los Angeles alleging and proving that he was denied the right to work through fraud, collusion, and manifest abuse of discretion, that the defendants have admitted guilt since 1969, and the matter still pends. Then I have written a book called Theft by a Court, where a young man in the 8th District of Los Angeles was driving a car, he's backed into by another driver who backs up a legal backup movement, and he's convicted in the Inglewood Municipal Court of reckless driving, he's deprived of his license, and he's paid substantial fines, both his family and he, and he was convicted in the Culver City Court for this same matter, for sex violence. I'm beginning to question a lot of the sex violence, but I'm here today because maybe you didn't get involved before, because L.A. was not directly involved. This time I'm here because my son, an employee of Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, now has been deprived of his right to work because as a holder of a Class B license and subject to random drug testing, he wasn't able to give them enough, and I'll be nice and use the right word, urine. So because he couldn't give them the right amount of urine, he is now deprived of his right to work because he's automatically accused of being a drug, abuser of drug and alcohol. He doesn't drink, he doesn't smoke, and he doesn't use drugs. But he has been convicted, or well, you might as well say, he's been deprived of the work despite just cause. Now, in this country, I thought you were innocent until you're proven guilty. I wonder about that, but I have letters, I wrote it.
Thank you. If you don't mind giving those to one of the sergeants-at-arms, if we can ask the assistants of one of the sergeants-at-arms to take that letter, that would be great, and we'll take a look at that. Thank you. Appreciate your comments today. Barry Henning, thank you for your flexibility, and that'll be our next speaker, and then Matt Dowd after that.
Ladies and gentlemen, good morning, my name is Barry Henning, and I'm sad to say that I'm here to file a complaint. I'm very sorry that I've had to come here and take your time today, I really wish that the city officials, your staff, who handles situations such as mine, could have handled this without me coming here. I'm an entrepreneur. Seven years ago, I started publishing a publication called The Baldwin Hills News. I had to stop publishing because I developed a very serious thyroid problem, which I'm a little nervous right now, and I'm having a hard time controlling, but please bear with me. I love community service, though, I started another business, More My Speed, to help me keep up with the community service, it's called citiesmarts.net. It's a local search engine that serves 51,000 cities in the United States, and particularly Los Angeles. I'm born and raised in Los Angeles, I'm a disabled American veteran, and I really enjoy what I do. It's a very nice website, I basically am here to recommend and ask advice. I'd like to recommend that the city establishes a policy in regards to individuals like mine who make requests to have links under the Local Resource section of your Los Angeles Public Library. I made a request a little over two months ago from the webmaster, of the webmaster to include me or consider linking me, and I was denied, I think I stepped on his foot. Since then, I've stepped on several foot in the library's department in my request, working my way to the chain of command, and I was denied. There's no policy that's set, most, it's traditional to have a policy, there are many individuals who are like me who have been denied, and quite frankly, I would like to ask your opinion and advice on what I should do to seriously be considered. I believe that there's too much power that the webmaster has, and there needs to be a policy set in place.
Thank you. We'll see if we can get somebody connected with oversight of the library department to be in contact with you. If you don't mind giving your information, Mr. LeBonde can assist you over there with our chief legislative analyst, thank you. Our last speaker is Matt Dowd.
Yes, Matt Dowd, Venice Beach. Just wanted to say first of all, Mr. President, that I know what it's like to be bright and intelligent, because I got pushed up elementary school, I got pushed up through school my whole life, and you know what happens? You know exactly what happens, you end up being the youngest kid in the class, and you get bullied a lot because you're smart and you're bright, but because you got pushed ahead, you end up with all these older guys who want to bully you. So yeah, I developed that complex. My dad was a doctor, he wanted me to be a doctor, I studied Latin and French, mathematics, physics, everything. I was a real carefree student, you might say. The principal called me up one week before matriculation and said, hey, Mr. Dowd, if you miss any more time, because you haven't done a lot of the work, but we know you're bright, so if you miss any more time in the last week of school, then I won't be able to put you through. So what did I do? I went the last week of school, I matriculated high school at the age of 16, qualified for college. The point with all this is that I see a classic bully case going on right now, that's why I'm involved. Why do you think? Why do I care? Why would I care? But your attorneys are over here right now, it's 500 on two, well, one, because the other guy, he's just playing bad cop, all right? But I'm driving it right now, and your attorneys, you know what they did now? We're meant to be settling a million, this is millions this case is worth now, we're meant to be settling this, but you know what they do? They fax us the new draft of the ordinance at 5:30 last night, and it's the first time we ever see the size of the new space, and they're saying, oh no, if you're black, if you're African-American, say, and you've got inextricably intertwined expression with your religion, you only get six feet by six feet down the end of the boardwalk. It's Rosa Parks kind of talk, and I'm after...
Thank you for your comments today, that'll close our general public comment. We can return to the items called special, please.
First item called special is item number 10 by Councilmember Perry.
Okay, Councilwoman Perry.
I'm sorry, that's, I'm sorry, first item is item number five, and that's called special by cards from the public.
We have a card from Mr. Sacks on item number five, and then Ms. Perry, if you'll let us know on item 10 if those issues have been resolved.
Just had to laugh about that. Yeah, good morning again. Very quickly, this is a consideration of a maintenance for the Northridge MetroLink lighting district. Just for clarification purposes, what does the Northridge MetroLink lighting district consist of? These other lighting districts that are in the agenda, I'm assuming this consists of homes and businesses, but the MetroLink, the Northridge MetroLink Station, is there a Union MetroLink Station lighting district? Is there a Van Nuys MetroLink lighting district? Do the MetroLink stations that run throughout the city, through the valley, all have lighting districts? For clarification, who's getting assessed here? And says number one, deny the protest and confirm the assistance. Who would be there to protest the assessments? It's a MetroLink train station. Who's being charged? Who's protesting? Appreciate some clarification from City Council on that, and also regarding the other MetroLink stations, do they also consist of lighting districts themselves? From my understanding regarding MetroLink, it's a subsidiary entity that was created by the Transportation Department almost 15 years ago. What do these districts consist of? Thank you very much for your attention and your clarification on this item.
Thank you, and this item, the supporting material for this, which is available with the agendas, either in person or online, has two different parcels that are affected by it, and so it looks like it's the owner of MetroLink, MetroLink itself, that is doing the assessment on themselves. We can please open the roll on this item? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 10, but a revised ordinance is still being distributed, so the next item after that would be item number 29, and that was called special by cards from the public.
Yeah, item 29, Mr. Dowd.
Just got to run my eye over the special event fee waivers. As I've outlined already, this is an important service that the city provides, obviously we have to have street closures, we need police, we need blockages, and as I look through, I see the commercial events reimbursing the city, which is what we asked for, and the next thing I'm going to go looking for is anything that I think is somehow racist or discriminatory. Obviously, if it's a public event and we're trying to be cultural, then I'll be happy for them to go through, but anything I see which is too narrowly tailored to some non-public interest, obviously, commercial events fall right into that category, but yeah, I'll be keeping an eye on it, but this looks okay for now, push it through, I'll look for unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, that closes our public comment on this one. Any councilmembers wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll.
Mr. President, there's one amendment.
Okay, on which item?
29K.
Okay, if you can read that to the record.
Thank you very much, I just need to reconcile, it's a typographical error in the motion, this was the Nokia Theater ribbon cutting, and should read the same in the third paragraph and delete the words Convention Center Hotel Groundbreaking Ceremony, we already had that.
Got you, thank you. As amended, that'll be accepted as a friendly amendment, let's open the roll on the entire item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next is item number 10, and the ordinance has been distributed.
Okay. Anybody having any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President, yeah, thank you very much, we just need to move the Plum report, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, let's go ahead and open the roll on 10, as amended, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next is item 34, and that was called special by card from the public.
Okay, Mr. Dowd, item 34?
Okay, normally, I'm not big on the resolutions, but this one happens to have major mitigating factors which bring it into my attention, to reinforce it and endorse this one, I hear Wendy Gruel, she's doing some good things, you know, I do hear the rumors, and so, you know, I want to congratulate Councilwoman Wendy Gruel for putting forward this resolution to help group Autism Heroes Day. The best thing about this one, and this is how everyone will remember it, that's my birthday, October 28th, coming up, I want the birthday cake, Mr. LeBonde, I've seen him do it before, to City Hall celebrities, and after 18 months, Channel 35, people come up to me and they say, you know what they say, they go, oh, how do you know so much about city business? Wow, I see you on TV talking about all those items, and little do they know that...
I don't believe he's on topic here.
Let me say, the one, the one good thing I have managed to do is that people do listen to us now, because they just want to see if we're tripping up, but this is a good one, October 28th, Breeders' Cup, Monmouth Park, for the horse fans out there too, it's going to be a big weekend, thank you, have a good weekend.
Appreciate public comment, that'll close the public comment on that item, if we can please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Motion for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Mr. President, there's one excuse on the desk.
If you'll please tell us that excuse.
Councilmember Weisar requests to be excused on November 20th for city business, this meets policy.
All right, Mr. Weisar is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Any business announcements, colleagues? If not, Mr. LeBonde?
In the Silver Lake District, tomorrow at Ivanhoe Elementary School, there's a hoedown from 11 to 3, support the local public school, and also tomorrow morning at 8:30, if anybody's a cyclist, my Valley Field Office, Riverside Drive in Toluca Lake, we have a bicycle boulevard ride in the early morning. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Perry.
Thanks very much. I just want to make a quick announcement that my mother has been with me for about a week now, and she's here in the chamber today. And she's here to celebrate her birthday from Ohio, and I'm very happy to have her. She's former elected official herself from where I grew up. And I just wanted to introduce her and tell her publicly that I'm happy to have her here. Hopefully, she'll move here. Okay, thank you.
And if they want to accept you in the 9th District, we'd be happy to have you in the 13th, so come on by.
That's right, that's true. I would ask her to vote for you, actually.
Sure, thank you. Announcements, Ms. Gruhl?
Thank you. Just real quickly, tomorrow, Tierra del Sol, a wonderful organization in my district, has a Halloween kind of fair. I encourage people to go there and support that organization, as well as on Sunday, the Sherman Oaks Fair, which will be on Ventura Boulevard. And we encourage people to go there and to support the local businesses and organizations. Thank you.
Okay. Other announcements, colleagues? Mr. Zine? And just to remind folks, we are trying to use the Channel 35. A week ahead, we have them here on Friday, so that people can do kind of PSAs of announcements that are in their districts. Mr. Zine, then we'll come to Mr. Weisar.
Eight thirty, the West Hills Neighborhood Council, I have a senior event at the Warner Center Marriott. Also, I'd like to invite everyone at 2:00 P.M., the 11th Annual Oktoberfest, Winnetka Park, 8401 Winnetka, sponsored by the members of Winnetka Neighborhood Council and other community groups. And that is it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Weisar.
Mr. President, not this weekend, but the following weekend after that, October 27th and 28th, I invite everyone to visit the Sixth Street Bridge, where we will have Dia de los Muertos celebration with Arte Calidad. We will also have some live performances from Molotov, one of Mexico's most renowned rock bands, on Saturday, October 27th. And as you know, Dia de los Muertos is a day of celebration that is celebrated throughout most of Latin America on November 1st and 2nd. There, it's time to remember our dead. And we celebrate, we don't just scare each other with costumes, but I invite you all to come celebrate art, culture, music, October 27th and 28th at the Historic Sixth Street Bridge. Thank you.
And I know once the dam starts to break, the flood starts coming. So, Mr. Parks, why don't you tell us a couple of community things, too?
I just have a small flood. Just want to announce for the public that in commemoration of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which we did today, Bethel AMH Church, under the direction of Pastor Logan, will have a commemorative ceremony October 20th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And just advise the public that the last scoping meeting for the Crenshaw Prairie EIR will be Serdi at Autobahn at 9:00 to 11:00 a.m.
Thank you very much. And as always, we invite folks to go to the community calendar at lacity.org, where all of these events are posted. And to remind folks, Ms. Gruhl, I'm sure would have been wanting to do the same thing, that we have lights out this Saturday night from 8:00 to 9:00. Turn off your lights and see the stars. Mr. Alagon?
Yes, I just want to announce two community events. First of all, tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. till 12:00, there will be a cleanup at Hanson Dam Park to help clean up Hanson Dam. So this is a community effort. The contact phone number is 756-8188. And of course, that's the 818 area code. And also, tomorrow, LAPD Foothill Division will be having an open house. That will be from 11:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m. And the contact person is Vicki Birch at 818-756-8866.
Thank you. Any other community announcements? If not, do we have any adjourning motions today? Okay, if I can, please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our adjourning And I'd like to recognize Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, I have two adjourning motions today. The first is for Salvatore Martorana, who is known by his friends as Sam. Sam was the son of Italian immigrants and founder of Casa Bianca Pizza Pie Restaurant in Icaroc. He was 83 when he passed away two Sundays ago from complications related to a brain tumor. Salvatore, or Sam, was born February 8th, 1924, in Milwaukee and raised in Chicago. At 17, he joined the Navy and served for four years in the Pacific during World War II. After the war, he returned to Chicago, where he learned the art of making pizza, and so he moved to Los Angeles in 1954. With his brother Joseph, Sam opened Casa Bianca in 1955 on Colorado Boulevard in Icaroc. Casa Bianca is considered by many to serve the best pizza in the Southland. They are known for their incredible sausage pizza and a big line of, a big line out the door waiting for their great pizza. Sam is survived by his wife Jenny and his son Ned, daughter Andrea, four grandchildren, and two sisters. Also, I am deeply saddened this morning to adjourn in the memory of Tony Bautista, a father, coach, educator, and mentor to countless individuals, and known to many as Coach Bautista. Coach Bautista passed away on October 10 after battling with terminal cancer. He is survived by two sons and two brothers. He grew up in El Surino and Lincoln Heights and graduated from Wilson High School, where he would later return as an administrator. He spent several years at Roosevelt High School, where he began as a special education instructor. During his tenure, he coached gymnastics and football, and will forever be remembered by the countless youths that he impacted as Coach Bautista. Later at Roosevelt, he became Dean Bautista, and soon after that, Assistant Principal at Hollenbach Middle School. His illustrious career in education came full circle when he was appointed to an administrative position at his alma mater, Wilson High School. Mr. Mike Flores, a friend and colleague of 20 years, describes Coach Bautista as someone friendly and caring, very helpful, and who got along well with others. A memorial in Coach Bautista's honor will be held at the November 2nd Football Classic between Roosevelt and Garfield, the largest football game played west of the Mississippi, where thousands will pay homage to his legacy. Services will be held today at All Saints in El Surino at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weisar. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of retired Chief Arthur Bohm from Cloverdale Police Department, passed away Sunday, October 7th. He basically moved his family to Cloverdale, became a member of the police department, went through the ranks, and became chief in '67 to '71, and then a short period in '72. He had a memorial service on October 14th. And I also ask, and this is although belated, is that one of our community activists, Louis Lee Settles, passed away in May of this year of natural causes. A longtime resident of the city of Los Angeles, after moving from Florida in 1971, retired after 30 years at the Exide Willard Company. He was interned services in May of this year, leaves a host of relatives.
Thank you. Other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? We will next be in session on Tuesday.